Yeah, that's like when I went through those was it was all zoom except for two sessions. It is hard to say. I can't really just have my conversations like we need to take a break.
Do you want me to stop?
They turn the camera off and you know you're like okay.
Larry, can you stop now?
I was just curious because I knew he ate is impressive and I knew you were one. I just wondered what you did.
Larry, hang up your phone.
All right, now talk. Are we getting any feedback?
No, since he hung up his phone, we don't have feedback. Okay. We are live.
That's right.
I think we're ready to start, but I hear a little bit of feedback.
So what if I turned off? I turned off this.
Yeah, no.
I can hear you.
All right, morning, everyone. I want to turn the time over to Mayor Woods to start off.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving us your Saturday morning for this workshop. City council session at the workshop is now open for Saturday, February 3rd, 2024. It's a couple of minutes after nine. Again, welcome everybody here. We're going to have Secretary wants to call the rule, please.
Council President Schilling.
Here.
Council Adams.
Here.
Council Berantos.
Yeah.
Council Briggs.
Here.
Council Collins.
Present.
Council Fitzgerald.
Yeah.
Council Chance.
Here.
Council Shane.
Here.
Council Burden.
Here.
Thank you. Larry, get well so you can come to this one next year.
Thank you.
So anyway, going to start today, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
Thanks, Mayor Woods. So just a couple of justice, the restrooms are back over there. I think everyone's been in this room before this meeting. And so today's a little bit different than our past goal setting retreats because we're not necessarily setting goals today. We're going to review our priorities for the council and talk through kind of the strategic plan and where we're at on various goals and actions that the council has set through the strategic plan. But today what we'll do is start by just going over the ground rules, a little bit modified from previous years. It's on the second page of the document that's really a two-page document. So you have ground rules for meetings like this for a couple of reasons. One, they reduce the element of surprise by giving everyone information at the start of the process about how it will be conducted. Participants can focus on this really important policies and goals rather than on mechanics like the process. The ground rules clarify roles and responsibilities, thus giving everyone notice about what's expected of them. Once the process gets going, ground rules help keep us on track and they help place focus on emphasis or substantive issues rather than on personalities, which makes conflict easier to deal with and more likely to be creative and constructive. So we have four ground rules for today. They are that we're all equal participants and share and shall have equal responsibility to voice opinions and ideas and assume equal responsibility for the success of the process. Second is that I'm your facilitator today and I'm responsible for facilitating the discussion and will endeavor to keep the discussion productive, professional, and on task. Third, will not interrupt others when they have the floor. So everyone again has the equal opportunity to speak, but let's not interrupt each other. Fourth, as we have scheduled break midway through the morning, but if you need to stretch, relay, use the restroom or anything like that, that's okay. Get up and go. So those are the ground rules. Any questions? Anything we feel needs to be added to those? All right, pretty good. On the front of that two-page document is kind of the run-through of what today's going to look like. There's really two parts to this. The first will be going over the council priorities. Those are all listed on this handout here. The blue, light blue, at the top says city council goal update. And so as we run through that, we'll just take your priorities one at a time. You have four priorities that you set this last year. Those are within the strategic plan. And so as we go through those, different department heads that are all here, some of their departments are responsible for particular goals. They'll just give a 20, 30-second update on that goal. They can just read what's here. They can add to it, whatever they want. So and then once we get through this packet, then we'll take our break. Then we'll come back and the department heads will give an update on the goals that are in the strategic plan that are not tied to one of your priorities. And so that'll be kind of the second part of the meeting today. As we go through any of the discussion items, the goals that we talk about, as councillors have questions, want to provide comments, feedback, ask, you know, if there's something else we need to do or add to, chime in during the conversation. So it's meant to be pretty free-flowing and just get an update on where we're at, what we're doing and how it's coming along. Does that sound good? All right. So next on the kind of plan for today's overview of the strategic plan. So every year, for the last three or four years, we've put together this document, the city's strategic plan, and this really is meant to be kind of a beginning of a work plan for the city. We start with the goal-setting process among the council. You identify, you know, goals or this last year you had priorities and we were able to tap a lot of different goals under those priorities. So those are included and listed in this document. And then city staff and our departments, led by the department heads here, will then take those goals and incorporate them into their departmental work plans. So this document is, it's a great document. It's available on our website. I talk about this document pretty frequently in working with others. And it's just a good way to make sure that the city is on task and performing the functions as we should. So what we'll do now is just move into the priority update. And so the first priority for the city council this year was healthy and fun community. Things to do for everyone such as movie theaters, parades, trails, athletic events, parks, and restaurants by providing for these private and public dollars and/or public dollars and private, public and or private partnerships while keeping the small-town feel. So the goals for that were goals one, four, six, seven, eight, and 11. So we'll start with goal one. Goal one was in 2024, the city of Dallas will host a sesquicentennial celebration of its incorporation as a city. And the actions were that the city would implement this, the sesquicentennial committee's plans, including 150th birthday party for the city, and the party would be on February 20th. That's right around the corner, two weeks away. I have my pen on. You all have your pens. You received invitations. So I'll talk about this one because this kind of falls under the city manager's office. We created a committee. Kim Herring, our city recorder, is the real workforce behind this project. She's organized the committee. She's brought on a lot of committee members. And we have a good group. I would say there's maybe, what, 10 of us?
Yes.
About 10 committee members, mostly made up of community members. And we have a whole host of activities that have been in the works for some time. We've done, so on the 20th or on the 17th, I'll work on the 17th. We decided to have a party on the 17th because it's President's Day weekend and Saturday, we felt was going to be more corrective to get people together than on a school day, which is the 20th. So we're having a party on the 17th for the community to come down. It's going to be from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. 10 o'clock is a flag raising. 10:45 is a pep parade. We have a variety of live history demonstrations that will go on underneath a really big tent. And so stuff like, you know, flint napping and there's a big forge that's going to be under there, so people making things with metal. We have some, oh, what do you call it, like spinning stuff, weaving, soap making, you know, a variety of things, kind of historical fun stuff that people can just come in and watch and see and participate in. There's going to be a quilt show in the civic center that's been going on by Grandma's Attic. So we're excited to have them participate in that. We have a timeline history that Kim Herring put together. It's awesome. It's going to be big in the civic center. We've put love notes out in the community and they're little postcards that people get to write what they love about Dallas. We gave them to every school in town and so kids have written what they love about Dallas on there. Those will be displayed in the civic center for the weekend. And then we're also in the business scavenger hunt, so we've engaged businesses as well. And so that's active right now. Each business has unique stamps and there will be prize, which businesses have donated for a prize package, probably a couple of different prize packages for that. We'll draw the winner of that on the 20th. There's been an essay contest that the schools participated in. So we have those essays. We're going to get some judges to evaluate those. And then we'll do a time capsule on the 20th as well. So we're gathering that information, going to stuff it in a big sewer pipe and bury it in the ground.
You're going to assign a specific date to open it or just let people decide as time goes by?
It'll be 50 years from now. So and we'll put, we're going to put it out in front of City Hall in the little planner area. We've finished City Hall. Yeah, you can open it. Yeah, that'd be great, Mayor Woods.
Yeah, well, it would make sense for the mayor to officiate, yeah.
You have to get re-elected 50 years from now. So I don't know if all of it will be 50 years, but it'll be great. Well, so we'll bury that out in front, end of the day on the 20th. We have a really big birthday cake that people can eat while they're there. And then we're also having a parade. We'll talk about that at the very end. You'll see on your agenda here. But and that's kind of the day will look like. We'll have some speeches on the day as well. David?
Two very quick things. Since we all have pins, I think it would be really cool if we all try to wear them in public from now until the event, which of course I fail to do because it's still sitting on my bathroom counter where I didn't put it on. But I think it'd be a cool thing for all of us to do, just to, you know, a little more visibility. And the other thing, just a little interesting side note for those who aren't aware of it. In terms of Oregon statehood, we're kind of on the cusp because we were the last state admitted before the Civil War, very last one. Just a little side note there.
So then on the 17th, it will be kind of an invitation-only, sorry, the 20th, be an invitation-only event at 1 o'clock in the afternoon in the civic center. We'll just have some like dignitary speeches. We'll have the essay contest winner read their essay. If they're not big, they can make it because of school conflicts, someone will read their essay. And yeah, so it'll be a short, shorter presentation, probably, you know, 20, 20 minutes of speaking and then people can just socialize in the civic centers, you know, the timeline and other things will still be on display there. So that'll be on the 20th. And of course, we're seeing happy birthday at some point, and it won't be a solo by me. So any questions on goal one?
No, I just, I would like whoever did the website did a fantastic job. It's great. They deserve super kudos.
Good. Allison. All right. Next goal is number four. City will assist community-based organizations to organize, run, plan, and run community events such as Sounds of Summer and Christmastown. I want to transfer some time over to choose six and start that one. These are going to end up for me already. Keep up with your involvement in the community events.
Well, the police department, we're typically trying to be involved in every event that comes up, most often for safety and security of the folks that are there, depending on when there's a parade, as there will be for the birthday party. We'll be late the parade this year. Whenever there's other community events, whether it's a Christmas event, Christmas parade, whether it's Crazy Days or Summer Fest or whatever it happens to be, we try to stay involved in those and always get all the, leave the parade. So we keep ourselves out there and try to.
Mark, you're also involved in this one?
Yes, we try to be involved with the community, the library. Andrea McCausner and I are both on the Dallas Arts Association and we work with them on the art park. And we're trying to do a lot more during the year. We're going to start having pop-up art shows in different businesses downtown and do some things in the event center to try and draw people in. And Andrea and I are both on the Pope County Cultural Coalition and we distribute grants to arts associations, different groups. In Dallas, last year, we gave money to the Dallas Community School to put a mural by, can't remember his first name, but Mr. Downs did a mural there. And that was, that came out really well. And Andrea runs a walking group for the OHSU. It's a study on small communities to try and promote health through physical exercise. It's a two-year program and they come like every three months and draw blood from the people involved and do a health survey on them. And it's supposed to last two years. Andrea had to lead it for six months and then turn it over to a citizen to run. But she has to check in with them every couple of months, make sure they're on target, and use the trail system in order to do this program. So with the nice, nice. I think there are about 20 some people.
Yeah. Council Collins?
We were going to rename Crazy Days.
It's, it's in process.
Excellent.
We don't, we don't have a new name yet, so it's.
Right, thank you.
Gary, do you have, use some Sounds of Summer stuff. It's your department.
Well, we have up to this point.
Yeah.
It's all kind of folding together into one big committee, but yeah, our Parks Manager, Jennifer Ward, has been kind of the leader of that effort up to now and arranging for the musical artist and making sure all, all the preparations are made. So it's a rather large undertaking, but I think well worth it. I think you all know it's a very popular event. So yeah, it's been really happy and proud to be able to be a part of that.
David, does the mayor?
Question for the chief. For those who aren't probably familiar with how you do it, how do you deal with your staffing issues when you're at like a parade or Crazy Days? Because you've got people who have to be on duty, but then you need more people for crowd control, volunteers and things good. Could you pull us on how that works?
Absolutely. And it's kind of morphed over the last few years and years past. We relied heavily on volunteers from the sheriff's office, from law and independence, and our volunteers that we had. But over the years, those volunteers have diminished. We used to spend a lot of time in Independence during their Fourth of July and they reciprocated and helped us out. Last couple of years, we've had very, very few people available from other agencies just because of their own staffing issues. We've changed a little bit. Instead of having a police officer standing on a barricade, Public Works stepped up and in some cases the fire department to help staff those barricades. So we kind of, then our resources out that way. We still have, for example, for the summertime Crazy Days, Summer Fest, whatever it's called, we still, we still have a supervisor we bring in on overtime to manage the events. We, you know, we do an incident action plan or event action plan and follow the ICS structure to kind of keep a good overview on the event, what's going on. But we still keep our regular day shift patrol doing what they do. And when we bring other people in, we're just bringing in overtime with everybody.
Mayor, I understand that Gary, that you got Johnny Nimble renewed for this year. Johnny Nimble?
Oh, I believe so, yes.
Oh, 20, more than 20, a long time.
25 or 26. We're going to put a locket hair in his time.
Make sure they're supposed to, yes.
Good. All right. Any questions on goal four? That's kind of what we're doing there. All right, Gary, goal six. This is supporting and encouraging community-led youth and adult recreational opportunities. Yep.
Okay, so yeah, we've, I actually know there's a lot of interest in the pickup of courts from council members. We are on track to actually build that in fiscal 24, 25. So just, you know, months away actually. So we're happy about that. John Bernard Park has been kind of our problem child here for a while in trying to get it all lined up and meet federal requirements. We thought we were ready to go and then because we're getting federal funding, the feds came and said, well, we'd like to do a cultural resources study on the property, look for artifacts. And so that delayed us by, I think, five or six months. Then on the heels of that, just very recently, we were notified, now we need to do it endangered species analysis of property. And, you know, that's good. I mean, it's just an open lot. There's not much major species could do there. So I'm happy to say though that Jennifer is on the phone, I think it was Thursday, with someone at, I think it was the National Park Service. And they acknowledged, well, yeah, you know, the likelihood of anything being there is, is almost zero. So we're going to take a pass on that. And they're going to let us move forward. So with that, now we have to line up our federal funding with a federal funding window and those aren't always open. So we're waiting for the next window sometime later this year. And once that opens, then that'll dictate when we're able to proceed with projects. So right now, we're saying we're probably going to have this thing built by, we'll probably be building it next summer.
Just coming, but.
Not this summer, next summer.
That doesn't impact the funding we receive from whoever the Blazers gave us money, right? So we're still going to be able to use that.
Yeah, that's part of the funding package.
So that money is just like saved.
Yeah, it's in our budget. It's been a lot.
So the other project that falls under this category is the Japanese Garden, which I know has a lot of interest among council and myself as well. So the new Japanese bridge is on order. We're actually expecting it to be delivered Monday to the Public Works Yard. And we're waiting now for the right weather conditions so we can get footings in. The ground's just too saturated right now. We're going to get footings in and hope to have the bridge installed by June. And next after that, one of the, one of our strategic plan goals was to get grant money for that project. Jennifer was able to secure $148,000 Oregon Parks and Recreation Grant for that. So that's great. And then as far as the, the design and reconstruction of the garden itself, that's, the design is ongoing right now. Architects are working on that. And we're looking at completion in fiscal 25. So again, same time John Bernard will be in construction, we believe, so will the Japanese Garden. With the possibility, we don't get any more disruptions or delays in the process, maybe by this fall, we might be able to get that, get the Japanese Garden up. But I don't want to promise that. But that's the most optimistic on that front.
Yeah, good. Council Collins?
Goodly, I had lots of coffee today. I'm the only one that has comments. Did we talk about, when Larry first brought this up, I thought we talked about making sure that this project included some sort of, I can't remember what those signs are called. We have them all over town, like they're a little historical, this is what this is about, this is how it all went.
There's a wayfinding sign?
No, not the wayfinding signs, just the ones that kind of say, this is our, this is what this is. This is what this project is.
You mean you're coming soon?
No, just a, like a permanent sign that says this is when it was originally developed. This is why it was developed. This is a little history about, like some reason why Dallas, why does Dallas have a Japanese gardens?
That's something that we can do. I don't know, yeah, it's not on my radar, but we can, that's, we can easily put up a kind of a historical sign like that. We have other signs. Larry, do you have a comment on that?
I, I would agree with that. If you can hear me, I think that it would be beneficial for all of us to know the history of that. It goes back long before I've even been around. So I would love to see some historical signs or some data on that put up in a, you know, in a nice fashion. It'd be great.
So real fast, I have all your comment, then Mark has a comment. So we have like the historical signs we put downtown. There's one up in the City Hall. There's two on the other courthouse. A sign like that is kind of what you're envisioning that would kind of talk about maybe the history of the gardens, how it's now being rebuilt. It was originally built back like the 1950s and something like that.
I think that Andrea's been talking to Jennifer, that OHSU group gave us $5,000 to use for trails and different things. And the Japanese garden was what they were going to donate to. And I thought it was to put some kind of sign recognizing the family that originally started it and things, but I don't know the details that Jennifer might know about that. Because they had to give money to do something in town and I thought that maybe was.
I think it's a great idea and if it's not being planned, you know.
Yeah, we can incorporate that really easily.
There is a wonderful history of that, of the gentleman who really spearheaded that and. No, no, Japanese American gentleman had been in tour at a camp during World War II.
Yes, that's right.
And was, became a prominent member in the community and garden came out of his part in the community.
This sounds like a really, really good idea. I, I would like to think as time goes by, I think of broadening it and doing it other places. Because there's a lot of places in town where information like that would be, you know, really nice to have. Just to pick an example out of the air, it's long gone now, but Tannery was a major part of town and a major landmark for a long, long time. A sign there saying this used to be here, maybe with an old photograph that you can get from the Historic Museum or someplace.
Yeah, as art.
And, and you know, that kind of thing. And, and, you know, that kind of thing. I think we can broaden it, um, and can do a lot of things like that in town.
Yeah. And I think as our Historic Landmarks Commission, um, you're going to be looking at your development code update on Monday and it includes changes to the Historic Landmarks Commission structure. As that grows and becomes larger, you know, committee, I think this is a project that would work very well in their wheelhouse to be able to develop these, um, you know, signs and where they should be going and stuff. I think it's really.
Good thing to keep on the radar.
Yeah, for sure.
Is it the Gashi family you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, very still around. The parents are gone, but very still around. He's a big son. And I know there's a sister city that Dallas had with this talent span. And in 68 or 69, I forget which year, just when they painted trails. I know that as a fact because I was one of them living there. And they pushed the rail rails for the blacktop ground and it was built now.
The guy she's used to on the center market on Terry.
Yeah.
Right. I just want to add one little, just make whoever spearheads this, we want to make sure that we involve the correct cultural experts to make sure that whatever we put up is.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. And leave it a homework.
Yeah.
We have a contractor on board. I can't remember the name of the contracting agency, Gary, off the top of your head. Yeah, Karasu International. Yeah.
They, they design Japanese gardens. That's, and they design and build. So that's all.
I knew that about the gardens. I meant about the signs.
Yeah, I think we would incorporate our consultant in that.
And they will bring their cultural context and assistance and they have sign up.
Yep. Sure. All right. So we kind of covered both goals six and seven. Gary, any questions on those goals? All right. If not one, goal eight, um, get us still into the first priority. Uh, any of you anybody's picture used to the Dallas Bowl by rate by 5%?
Been doing that. Uh, due to, due to, uh, COVID, we had a real big jump last year. It was 23%. But, uh, I don't, I don't think that's going to continue. Um, but also the cultural and educational programming, um, that's basically what we do all the time. Uh, we've done a lot with, um, STEAM, um, with the science. We, um, had a program with Oregon Institute of Technology last year where we brought in, um, kids and parents and had a coding night. It was done basically through Zoom and it was a night last year when there was an ice and snowstorm. And I think we were like one of the few places in the entire state that went ahead and did it. It was, it, it, it went really well. People really enjoyed it. Uh, we have a lot of, um, times where we have steam nights where we just put all of our kids out. And the last one we had, uh, the Rotary came and they volunteered and they took stations and helped the kids work with things and, and it was really nice. Um, we also do a lot of cultural programming. I'd like to say Thursday night, we had, um, an OSU professor who is a, um, teaches, um, Indigenous studies and he's a Grand Ron member. And he gave a talk on his book on the tribal histories of Willamette Valley. We had 105 people in the gray scatter day room. We only had 99 chairs and, um, 168, according to the, uh, fire marshal we can have in there. We weren't overcrowded, but it would, uh, you couldn't fit 168 people in there in chairs. So, um, it was really nice. He was really excited. Uh, it was the biggest, uh, group of people he had had on any of his talks. So it's really, it's good for Dallas and, uh, and actually found out he had come to another talk we had had at our library in, in the past, last year on Bay Ocean. So he'd been there before. So it's really good. Um, but we have a lot of, uh, music programs. We try and do different things. We, we've had, um, classical guitarist, jazz groups, uh, different kinds of music that you don't get a lot of other places in town. And, um, we also do spoken word, a lot of storytelling, uh, for adults. Um, we have coming up right around St. Patrick's Day this year, a, a Celtic storyteller and he's going to do stories on what he calls hedge roll storytellers from Ireland during the penal codes. They weren't allowed to celebrate their own culture and these people went out into the countryside and people would come out at night. And they would explain their culture through stories to people to keep those things alive. So that's the kind of things we try and do that's both cultural and historical to try and teach people. Um, and I think the next, I think that, actually have any questions?
This one's yours, but David had a question.
Yeah, well, uh, the, the guy who spoke Thursday night, since you had such an overwhelming response to that, could we think about maybe getting him back again, either to do the same talk for a different audience or, or, or more material that, that he wasn't able to use this time?
I know he is, he's about to write, finish another book soon and on a similar topic with a little more in depth. So I, I, you know, I can talk to him about that. I know he has a lot of speaking engagements signed up, but I looked at his schedule all the way through May right now.
Well, you said this is the best response he's had so far. So he might be real receptive to coming back again.
Probably is. Um, I will talk to him. I know he has another book coming. I said, been working on it for eight years. And, um, I'll see whether he would want to wait or, I know he put the, the first printing sold out within a week of his book. And they did a second printing and we've not been able to get the book, um, because, uh, everybody bought all the books he brought or would have bought one from him that night. Um, but, uh, I think they're on the third printing and it only came out in November. Uh, so he's, he's doing really well with this book. I think it's the perfect time for it.
But I'll tell you, you should be able to get full of copies.
Yeah. We, we're supposed to get it February 12th. Um, and, and it had, in, a lot of libraries are going to, are going to have in, in a lot of the historical societies around, uh, Willamette Valley are having some talk.
Very cool. All right. So let's jump to goal 11. It's last goal and priority one.
Um, providing space for visual, musical and literary arts. Um, as you know, we, we have talked of expanding the scatter day room into part of the library. So a lot of we've, we've been doing with the updating we've done this year, uh, with the bathrooms and the carpet and the painting. And we're going to put windows in Monday and Tuesday, uh, which is really good timing because ARP is also going to be in that room doing taxes that day. So it's.